Hey, thanks for stopping by Minnesota Black Girl Regiment here on YouTube or Rumble, wherever you might be catching it. Be looking one for the subscription button down there. It should be there, uh, an icon right in the screen as you're watching if you're on YouTube. Or there's a place to follow me on Rumble. There's also another place here on YouTube where down below where you can hit subscribe. Make sure you do that. And then check out the bell icon on YouTube where you can make sure you're getting notifications. Then I want you to like, comment and share this video. And I believe this one is going to probably get a fair number of likes and a fair number of dislikes and probably, probably, probably provoke the ire of people on both sides of this argument. We're going to be talking today and I'm going to be showing you the video. We're going to be taking a look at some video from October 11th, Monday night, uh, in at the Dover Yoda, um, school district board meeting. This particular section of, of video is going to be kind of catching a situation that arose after several of us showed up to back up some parents and some grandparents who were going to the school district to express some discontent with the fact that the Dover Yoda School District was requiring masks and whatnot on the children. And we, we entered the building. There are no signs saying masks were required. There were numerous people all over the building, uh, not wearing masks inside the building. We, we walked through the hallway. No one was wearing a mask because I think except for a person in janitorial services. We turned into the little short foyer hallway to lead into the media center area, the media room. And there was a wipe board there that said, uh, if you're attending the school board meeting, you will be required to wear masks. Um, I, along with my group that I was with, we entered, we did not put on facial coverings. The school board members began to show up and then the school board chair addressed us, Pagel, and said, uh, we, we require that everybody who's attending this meeting or is present to have a facial covering on. We're going to ask that you, cover up. And if you don't cover up, we're going to ask that you leave. And so some conversation ensued, um, a little bit of debate back and forth with one of the members of the group and a couple of the members of the school board. Uh, one, one member was actually very receptive to hearing out what we had to say about the legality of requiring masks and not requiring masks and whether or not they had the authority under Minnesota state statutes to do so. The, they decided in frustration that they were going to delay the meeting until seven o'clock. Uh, a good portion of the school board members got up, walked out of the room. And we're relatively certain that they were communicating behind the scenes. They either exited at different doors, went in through different doors, and then went into another room together, or they were communicating electronically. We cannot, it's, it's a very strong suspicion. What we do know is that the deputy who is the school resource officer, he's an Homestead, Homestead County Sheriff's Office Deputy, his name is Todd Peterson. Um, he was on site. He did get up to go make a phone call. Um, in that hour timeframe, we continued to monitor and observe to ensure that open meeting law was not being violated by the school board. And quite frankly, I'm, I, I'm, I'm pretty certain that there was some sort of communication violation about how to proceed on the part of the board. I, I just, they were way too united when they came back into the room. Uh, when they did come back in the room, uh, Deputy Todd Peterson did show up. He was there. School Board Chair Pagel addressed us again. He says, we're going to give you, I think it was five or 10 minutes, uh, to, um, comply or, or leave. And about that time, uh, Peterson's backup started to show up in, by way of, uh, Jen's Damon, uh, is a sergeant, uh, some Nicholas Hymer and John Morozic. And we're going to cut to the video now, and then I will be, um, adding captions to the video and interspersing, uh, and splicing in some more video commentary.
She wants your name to try and intimidate you.
Yeah. So please tell us the law that you follow that supports your, your point and measure.
We have the right to report to the children.
Oh, because it's a public building?
So we stand here on Minnesota statute 12.39. You have the right to refuse medical treatment. And we have medical professionals. And our individual rights to that exemption stand in law. If you agree with that one, 12.39. You've been here for all right now. Anybody got a sip? Anybody got a sip?
No, no.
I can eat something.
No, guys, don't.
Again, if you agree with Minnesota statute 12.39. Sorry, you have the right to refuse medical treatment. Is this Johnson down there or is still adding up, holding a medical wording of Minnesota statute 609.75? We are the degree of exempting out. There you go. Go ahead and laugh.
It used to.
You're an elected, you're an elected servant. Do you want to laugh at us, sir?
Yeah.
The policy is that we're not. And our law also says we can exempt out of that. And law says against law, we can't.
Can you please say, tell me exactly why I would be playing a mask on that doesn't present any of these illnesses? I have a nurse of a restaurant years and that piece of cloth that has, you have on your face does absolutely nothing for you.
It's not the discussion because you don't want to hear it.
Put a mask on.
No.
Get out of your meeting.
They request you to put a mask on so we can have a meeting. You might be part of the meeting and put a mask on and we'll get started. Remember this is a chance to hear from your point of view.
If masks work and you are wearing a mask, how is me not wearing a mask affecting you?
Good question.
You're wearing your mask.
No, you're not.
So, so how is me not wearing a mask affecting you, please, sir? If masks work?
You two all realize you're elected, right? You serve the mercy of law.
And we pay your salary and the whole real law.
There it goes.
All right. So if you watch here, this is where backup starts to show up, right? You know, backup shows up and they, they come in very, it was very, you know, they're coming in as law enforcement, completely understand. But if you watch the big guy, this is a jerk. He's a jerk. He's absolutely a jerk. And you can tell that Morozic has a chip on his shoulder because he comes in, if you watch closely, you'll note he has his handcuffs out and he's actually jingling, jangling them, dangling them. And he does a little head count of people. Somebody want to explain to me why a deputy in this situation would come out or come into the building with his handcuffs out already? There's been no order to, to move, remove people. There's been no threats of violence. There's been no threats of, of force given by the, the crowd that didn't want to, to wear facial coverings at all. None. None. There again, I'm going to go back to Morozic comes in with his handcuffs out. Why? Why? Because that's Morozic. That's what he does.
If your mask worked, why is me not wearing a mask affecting you? That I think is a legitimate question that deserves an answer. If your mask worked, how am I affecting you?
I'll ask you one more time.
I'm asking you to answer the question that has been posed to you three times now.
For the last time.
How is me not wearing a mask affecting you?
Or your ability to answer.
Or your ability to answer that specific question?
I've asked you several times.
Gentlemen, I've asked you several times.
Gentlemen.
They got their cuffs out. They're getting ready to take people.
Are you, I just want to ask the difference.
Have you guys ever had this issue at like St. Charles and Chapel?
You're getting ready to arrest us for not wearing masks?
We're domestic terrorists. No, we're not that. No, we're not that, Jim. We're medics. You can't force us to. You're claiming our exemption under Minnesota statute 12.39.
It's time to go.
You guys go with your mother. Take your stuff and go with your mother. Take your stuff and go with your mother. Before you could put cuffs on them, you have to give them a trespass order. You know that.
You are trespass.
If you need to leave.
Let's go.
Now. All right. Thank you very much.
You got two minutes.
Let's go.
Wow. I never thought I'd see this from the guys that I used to know. Let's go.
You guys have really been demeaning your job having to.
Let's go.
Wow. Shame on you guys. Shame. This is what happens when you follow Torgerson. This is Torgerson's doing. This is Torgerson's doing. This is what happens when Torgerson Sheriff.
Please, then give me the truck.
Don't walk. Oh, they're clapping. They're cheering. They're relieving.
Man, wow. Julie, come on.
I just want to know the answer to that one question.
Wow.
He said he would talk to us outside.
Okay.
Let's go. These idiots in there are not working, Jill.
I guess technically we could have saved time and just exited the back door.
No. Nobody leave. Thanks for showing up. I don't know who you are.
Yeah. Forgot all about it until I saw that somebody said it got delayed till seven. Were you at the last one too?
No.
I was at that one. That was a waste of time as well.
Light. Make sure you're in light. No. Names and badge numbers for everybody.
You won't talk about not wearing a mask? That's not why you're out here.
Yeah, it is. So we're all trespassed. Are you going to write our orders right now, Todd? Todd, are you writing? No, we write our orders right now, Todd.
You guys have one more minute to exit the school property if they trespass you, or you will be arrested for trespassing and obstruction.
Are we going to, how are we going to get our trespass orders, Todd? That's all I want to know.
The sheriff's attorney won't talk to us about masks, but now we're going to trespass in a public building.
How do you trespass this without a formal order? I can't believe this. Who's, who authorized this order? Sarge, who authorized this order? Who authorized you guys to do it? Not the school district. You know it's got to. So the school district authorized this.
The school district contacted us because of a potential violation that was going to. They were concerned that there was going to be people that did not follow the mask mandate. So before the school district was going to end up trespassing people that we didn't follow.
It's only at the ones that they're mandated, right?
I haven't been to any of them.
Five minutes or two minutes, whatever they gave you for a direction. All right.
Is this what the sheriff's department has been beneath you?
No, we don't want to be a mask police.
So then why are you letting them, Sarge?
Officer Peter or Deputy Peterson that we would not be arrested for not wearing a mask.
No, I never said anything about.
I have it on video.
You, you did, you did too.
I know we're trespassing. I know. I understand.
That is what I said.
Definitely have to be the owner of the building to trespass that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Therefore. I'm not going to argue this with you because the people elected them to make the decisions.
Don't let your frustration with them.
Therefore, they made a decision that this is what's going to happen. They have trespassed you.
Do you want to go to jail for those idiots in there?
Fuck no.
All right. Then we, that's it. I appreciate you guys being public servants and working for the schools.
Yeah.
I can't believe it. It's more fodder for my story about Torgerson. You guys, you, I've known all of you for so long. You know how wrong this is. You know how wrong this is. You know you're wrong. I'm begging you guys to change your minds about this because you know you're wrong.
You're nothing more than mercenaries.
I'm not listening to you, man. You have no authority over me. None. You big load. I expected better from you, Sarge, and you too, Todd. Wow. This is also you don't get in trouble by the big guy and you know how dirty and crooked he is. You know how dirty he is. You know what he did to me. I know you saw the email. I know you saw the letter. That's why I'm here tonight. You guys know how dirty he is. Take the constitution that you swore an oath to, rip it up because you just proved it means nothing to you. You should be ashamed. I served alongside of you guys, maybe in a different capacity. We joked together. We joked together about stuff. What is wrong with you? All of this? So you don't have to worry about losing your jaws because you know if you don't do this, Torgus, it'll take you out.
So now you've watched us be escorted out and you've watched a little bit of the interaction. So we're going to take a look here at something that, uh, the deputy said, the Homestead County deputies. They said that we were being trespassed. Okay. So let's take a look at trespass law. Either on an old time or part-time basis, a dwelling must be part of a multi-dwelling, yada, 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 constructions at yada, yada, yada. Owner or lawful possessor as used in paragraph B, clause nine means the person or on whose behalf a building or dwelling is being constructed, altered, painted or repaired in the general contact or some country, yada, yada, yada. Posted as used, I, in a paragraph, B, clause four means the placement of a sign at least eight and a half inches by 11 inches in conspicuous places, right? So we're, we're kind of dealing, we're dealing with some of the, the, and this is all ancillary to trespass, right? So it has to be posted as you're not allowed to be here. Well, then we have these business license issues. It goes, um, so let's, let's see here what, how a person becomes guilty of trespass. A person is guilty of a misdemeanor if the person intentionally permits domestic animals. Okay, that's not us. Interferes unlawfully with a monument. That wasn't us. Trespasses on the premises of another without claim of right, refuses to depart from premises on demand of the lawful possessor. Hmm. Well, some people would argue that the school board, school district owns the building. Well, they're a public entity. So I don't know if they, that would fly. Occupies or enters a building or locked or posted building of another without claim of right or consent of the owner or the consent of the one who has a right to give consent, except in an emergency situation. That's odd. Well, maybe that. Uh, enters the premise of another with intent to take or injure any fruit, fruit trees or vegetables growing. No, that's not it. Enters or is found on the premises of a public, private summit. That's not us. Returns the profit, property of another with the intent to abuse, disturb or cause. No, that's not us. Returns the property of another within one year after being told to leave the property and not return if the actor is without claim. Okay. Uh, that didn't happen. Entered the lock or posted construction site. No, that wasn't it. Entered the lock or posted aggregate mining. No, that's not it. Crosses into or enters any public or private area lawfully cordoned off by or at the direction of a peace officer engaged in the performance of official duties. As used in this clause, an area may be cordoned off through the use of tape, barriers or other means conspicuously placed and identifying the area as being restricted by a peace offer, officer and identifying the responsible authority. And peace officer has a meaning given in six, its definition by the state of Minnesota. It is an affirmative defense to a charge under this clause that a peace officer permitted entry into the restricted area. Okay. This area wasn't cordoned off. Now, as you saw, there are four, four deputies from the Homestead County Sheriff's Office standing there, but that's not cordoning off. And this was pursuant to being told to leave. Okay. Now, here we get to, to pertinent part. Trespass on school property. Now pay close attention to this. It is a misdemeanor for a person to enter or be found in a public or non-public elementary, middle or secondary school building unless the person is an enrolled student in, a parent or guardian of an enrolled student in, or an employee of the school or school district. Okay. Well, wait, none of us fit into that category, has permission or an invitation from a school official to be in the building. I would argue that the fact that they were having a public meeting is one permission and invitation to be there, is attending a school event, class or meeting to which the person, the public or students' families invited or, and the public is invited to meetings. They are invited to meetings. You do not have to receive a personal invitation. The public is invited to the meetings by the, by the nature of open meeting law. Has reported the person's presence in the school building in the manner required for visitors to the school. Well, here's the deal. We're there for a public meeting. You didn't have to report to the school because one, this is not during regular school hours. This is outside of regular school hours for a board meeting. Okay. It is a gross misdemeanor for a group of three or more persons to enter or be found in a public or non-public elementary, middle or secondary school building unless one of the persons is, is an enrolled student in, a parent or guardian of an enrolled student or an employee of the school or school district, has permission or invitation from a school official to be in the building. There again, open meeting laws, tacit permission, is attending a school event, class or meeting in which the person, the public or students' families invited or has reported. So there's no violation here. We're, we're all there. Sure. We're, we're on the same page. We all entered together, but we're all there as concerned individual citizens to observe a school board meeting that they clearly didn't want observed by people who weren't following their rules. It is a misdemeanor for a person to enter or be found in a school property within one year after being told by the school principal or the principal's designated to leave the property and not return unless the principal or the principal's designated has given the person permission to return to the property as used in this paragraph. School property has the same meaning and it goes to another definition. We're not, it's not worth looking at. A school principal or a school employee does that designated by the school principal to maintain order or on school property has, who has reasonable cause to believe that a person is violating this subdivision may detain the person in a reasonable manner for a reasonable period of time pending the arrival of a peace officer. A school principal or a designated school employee is not civilly or criminally liable for any action authorized under this paragraph that the person's action is based on reasonable cause. A peace officer may arrest without warrant if the officer has probable causably the person violated the subdivision within the preceding four hours. The arrest may, may be made even though the violation did not occur in the officer's presence. Now, they would have to stretch and stretch and stretch to justify a trespass in this situation. And so we were being trespassed, not for violating any of these. We were being trespassed for, for not wearing a mask. Now, can you be trespassed for that? I guess that remains to be seen. Sooner or later, somebody's going to have to, to push that. I don't know. But now we're going to take a look at something else that was said by, uh, I believe it was Deputy Peterson, Todd. Todd threatened us with obstruction. We were going to be arrested for obstruction. So obstruction in Minnesota is statute 609.50. Crime, whoever intentionally does any of the following may be sentenced as provided in some division two. Obstructs, hinders or prevents lawful execution of any legal process, civil or criminal, or apprehension of another on a charge or conviction of a criminal offense. Obstructs, resists or interferes with a peace officer while the officer is engaged in the performance of official duties. Interferes with or obstructs a firefighter while the firefighter is engaged in the performance of official duties. Interferes with or obstructs a member of an ambulance service personnel crew, as defined in this section, who is providing or attempting to provide emergency care or by force or threat of force endeavors to obstruct any employee of the Department of Revenue while the employee is lawfully engaged in the performance of the official duties for the purpose of deterring or interfering with the performance of those duties. Subdivision two penalty, a person convicted of violating subdivision one may be sentenced as follow, as follows. The person knew or had reason to know that the act created a risk of health, substantial bodily harm or serious property damage, or that caused death, substantial bodily harm or serious property damage to imprisonment for not more than five years or to a payment of a fine of not more than $10,000 or both. If the act was accompanied by force or violence or their threat thereof and is not otherwise covered by clause one, to imprisonment for not more than one year or to a payment of a fine of not more than $3,000 or both. In other cases, to imprisonment for not more than 90 days or to a payment of a fine of not more than 1,000 or both. Now, let's keep in mind here. We were threatened with obstruction when none of that, what we were doing was in any way, shape or form, close to being obstruction. We left when we were, when they told us we were being trespassed for the moment. And by the way, we were not told to never return to the property. Let's keep that in mind. And you heard me say, if we're being trespassed, then I want a trespass order. And they got really snotty about it. And you also heard me dress them down. I absolutely did dress them down. Those deputies came in with an axe to grind. Morozic especially. And given the opportunity, Morozic would have gladly slapped cuffs on every single person there. They don't care about the, their violation of the constitution at all. They don't care. Not too long ago, I believe here it was in Stillwater, a police officer was observing a school board meeting as his, was his responsibility. And the school board ordered the police officer to, uh, remove people for trespass. And he said, I will not do that. This is a public meeting. They are public citizens and we, and we, I am not going to be complicit. I'm not going to be guilty of colluding with you. And I'm paraphrasing, you know, in a, in a different way. But he said, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be party to this. It's high time that law enforcement recognizes that they have a responsibility regardless of the consequences. At some point they have to stand up and say, I am not going to take part in the silencing of dissent. I am not going to take part in disrupting a peaceful protest. And that's what we were there doing at that point. It had become a peaceful protest. It was a protest. They knew it was a protest. And as a governing body of elected servants, working in conjunction with appointed public servants, they conspired to shut down a peaceful protest. Every single one of the deputies that was there should have a formal complaint filed against them by everybody who observes these actions. And if you don't feel that the others deserve it, so maybe this Nicholas, um, Hymer didn't do anything. He just stood there. Okay. You know, everybody talks about that thin blue line and how it, cops won't rat each other out. You see, it's deeper than that in a lot of situations. A lot of times cops won't say anything when they watch somebody violate the constitutional rights of another person. Now, I have people in law enforcement that I love and respect, people I care for deeply. And there's two types of cops now. There are those that are going to stand on their oath and stand on the constitution. And at some point they're going to say, I'm not doing this anymore. I am not going to violate the constitutional liberties of these people, these constitutionally enshrined liberties of, of individuals anymore. And then there's the others who the only thing And then there's the others, who the only thing they care about is keeping the peace with their superiors and keeping their paycheck. I was just doing my job, I was just following orders. You understand how dangerous that is? That's how you end up with concentration camp guards. And make no mistake, a guy like John Marozic, working in his, uh, public servant capacity, would be just as quick to throw you on a cattle car and haul you off to a concentration camp as he would be to slap cuffs on you for obstruction when there was no obstruction taking place. Because all he cares about is power, and all he cares about is not pissing off the boss. You don't have to agree with us, you don't have to agree with, with us resisting wearing masks in a public school board meeting. But you have to understand that elected and appointed servants are now working in collusion. They're conspiring to shut down dissent. And they will come after anyone that dares to challenge them, because they're afraid of accountability. They hate accountability. And if you don't understand that, if you don't see that, I don't know what to tell you. It's time to start pushing back against these public servants who are acting outside of the bounds of their constitutional oath. They violated our constitutional rights, our constitutionally enshrined liberties that night. They know they did, which is why at the end you heard, or, or that you saw them begin to close in on me. Because they didn't care until I started calling them out for how they were treating us. And for just following orders. And I will have no truck with anybody in the law enforcement community that just follows orders without giving any kind of intellectual thought to whether or not those orders are lawful, right, or infringe on the constitutionally enshrined liberties that we see, especially in the Bill of Rights, especially as it pertains to the First Amendment. Shame on you, Deputy Peterson. Shame on you, Sergeant Damons. Shame on you, Deputy Hymer, and shame and disgust on you, Marozic, for the way you even came into that room. You're nothing more than a bully with a badge. Always have been and always will be. Six, I'm there. Tyrannas.